Good evening and welcome to the evening meeting of the December 6, 2021 County Commissioners Meeting. I'd like to officially call the meeting to order. The first order of business is the announcement this morning, the board used handwritten ballots to elect two at-large members to our Economic Development Advisory Board, and the results were tallied by our clerk. And I'd like to announce Edwin Allrich and Steve Hargis were reappointed to the board. And for Mr. Hargis, I need a motion to grant a waiver for his length of service.
So moved.
Second. All right, motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now I'll need to move on to approval of the agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
All right, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And now we get to the public comment portion of our meeting. I believe we have at least one person here for public comment. Mr. Lee, if you would come up and kind of give us your name and your general area that you're from.
Sure, thank you. My name is Stuart Lee. I live right here in Smithfield, just down the street actually, on Second Street. And thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to speak with you. I had brought in a letter that you've each received on behalf of the African-American Caucus of Johnston County. Some of you were invited to speak at their meeting in November. The letter is specifically asking for your consideration of creating a board to specifically look at transportation needs in Johnston County. Based off of who you talked to, Johnston County is either the fastest or one of the fastest growing counties in North Carolina. On top of that, it doesn't take but a second to drive right away from this building to see the growth with Amazon, infrastructure going up and down 70, the amount of housing going up, and then jobs. With all that growth comes the need to get to access to those new things in this county. Recently, the bipartisan infrastructure bill was passed to help with roads, bridges, rail, expand access to clean drinking water, and ensure Americans have access to high-speed internet. In North Carolina alone, we could expect roughly $450 million for bridge replacements and repairs. It's estimated about $910 million can come to the state in the next five years. Then on top of that, there are a ton of other opportunities to help supplement these, this bipartisan bill that Johnston County could take advantage of, especially being a rural and urban county. You have six areas within this county that are considered urban cluster according to the U.S. Census. So there's a great opportunity to look at funding opportunities to help rural and urban, and bridging that urban divide. Some of those include DOT's RAISE grant, which is roughly $1 billion, $25 million per project. There are a couple of counties in this state that have actually been awarded what it was called a Tiger Grant at that time. Department of Defense, there's the innovative readiness training opportunities. Through USDA Rural Development, there's opportunities to address transportation and infrastructure. The purpose of a committee would essentially be working with you as the commissioners to look at developing plans for compatible use, expanding public transportation, preserve future transportation corridors. The possibilities are endless. Again, it's to help build capacity to look at these needs and the opportunities that are out there. There are roughly right now over 178 different grants at the federal level and funding opportunities for technical and financial assistance just to help with transportation and infrastructure changes at the municipal and county level. So the letter is essentially, as I stated before, to ask for your consideration to create a committee or a board that can help look at these opportunities and to help you shape a plan that best fits not only what the county is today, but where it's going for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say, Mr. Lee, it's kind of timely today. We had an update from our JCATs, which dealt with this kind of specific transportation issues, in addition to looking at, you know, the bus rapid transit, commuter rail, and other options, but tying it together to serve all of Johnston County, both the urban and the rural areas. So your presentation and comments tonight were very timely.
Well, thank you there. I was fortunate enough to work on the White House Special Counsel for Strong Cities, Strong Communities, and looking at multimodal modes of transportation here in North Carolina. So you are correct, there are a lot of opportunities that are out there, and it is, it's timely because of the time of year with federal opportunities and how they filter down to the state. So an opportunity such as what the African-American Caucus is presenting would definitely help with the capacity needed to research these opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Mr. Leggett? So we've gone to this crazy policy of name and general area.
Yes.
You may have heard of that.
No, who started that?
My life story. Angelique Leggett, Smithfield, North Carolina. And Mr. Stuart was here, Stuart Lee was here to present the letter that we put together for you guys regarding the public transportation here in Johnston County. So I wanted to tell you all, we appreciate you listening to us and considering it as well. I think it's something that will be definitely beneficial to all Johnston County citizens, and we really hope you consider it. And of course, as I always say, if you need any help or anything, I am here.
I'd like to say something to Angelique. I've given a lot of thought to some of the conversations we've had. You were somewhat critical about JCATs in that it really hasn't reached everyone, you know, as it says on the thing. And you're right. And of course, Mr. Davis talked to us today about the limiting factors, the funding and the source of those fundings. But it seems to me JCATs might be the nucleus that we can expand. I mean, that program is there. It's got buses, 32 buses already. If we can just figure out a way to get it funded so that when people like you were talking about need to go to a doctor, need to go wherever, you know, we might could not reinvent the wheel, but expand what we've got and make it workable. I'm not sure this county is ready for full public transportation that we talked about today. That might be somewhere in the future. But somewhere in between that, when people need to ride, they need to ride, and we ought to figure out a way to do that.
Okay. Well, thank you for considering that because I think it is a great foundation. It takes care of the people who are, who need it the most. So it's definitely something, and what we're trying to expand it for are those who don't have a job and don't have the money for insurance to get a car, to get a license and things like that. But I think we have a great foundation. Johnston County has a beautiful foundation with its local government, and it's just ready to expand and build as the new residents come in. So I think we're on a good start here.
Right.
Thank you for your interest in all this. We appreciate it very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, do we have any emails? With that, we'll move on to the public hearing process. We will first hear case 2115, open conditional zoning district hearing. And as Briscoe Darlin would say, jump in and hang on because this is our second, second one. So Brass, if you'd come up.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Case 21-15 is petition to rezone 2.43 acres of 5.97 acre tract located at 2239 Barbara Mill Road. It's Clayton Township from Macroport Residential to General Business Conditional District. The owner and applicant are Stephen Haley Linderman, and the conditional use, where part of the conditional zoning request is specific use of a event venue. Utilities and services in this area provided by MacArthur Fire District and Clayton Rescue. Current property is owned AR and used for agricultural residential purposes, and surrounding areas, land uses are AR, used for agricultural residential purposes, and a neighborhood business, special use district, and that is a civic organization facility, meeting facility. Traffic along Barbara Mill Road is at 5,100 vehicles per day, and Barbara Mill Road does appear on our transportation plan as an existing minor thoroughfare with adequate design capacity. Property is in a primary growth area designated in our comprehensive land use plan. Staff recommendation is approval. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have about the conditions that are, conditions noted in your packet or the responses by the applicant.
Any questions for Mr. Newton? If not, would ask the applicant to come forward and present their request and the proposed conditions.
I should have you open CDs, but just in case, it'll help a little bit. Get you to know, familiar with the site. My name is Steve Linderman. I'm the owner, along with my daughter Haley. And if you're familiar with the site, it's generally known as the House on Barbara Mill. Actually, if you Google it, it pops up that way as well. It's an old house. It was built in 1910, located north on this plan would be up. So it's located at the corner of Slate Top and Barbara Mill, right near Lee Road. As I said, the original house was built in 1910. It's currently roughly approximately six acres. And the southern, which is called half of the site, is what we're looking to have rezoned for a venue. The concept would be that this would be used for weddings, small meetings, business meetings, things like that. Right now, the concept is we would have, so again, if you're, I've got some photos of the site I'll show here, kind of just to get you familiar with it. So here's a Slate Top Road view as it is before we planted 50 Arda Vites along the edge here to help screen from Slate Top. Now I'm going to turn it this way. This is the view that probably everybody would recognize. This is the Barbara Mill elevation. So that's the street view. That's right kind of almost from Lee Road. You just turn from Lee Road and you cross in from the house. So it's got a great huge porch. This actually is an updated picture from the old one. You can see it's under construction now, but it's renovating it. But the site itself is, you know, very wide open. It's protected around the perimeter by existing woods. And so we have on site, we have a 100-year-old magnolia tree that we're actually trying to see, get it certified, or at least looked into, see if it's the largest magnolia tree in the state. So if not, to be in eastern North Carolina, we're pretty positive about that. And then, so we have an existing row of crepe myrtles here. We've planted two rows, a double staggered row of Arda Vites here that will help screen. We're planning on, our outdoor event area would be near, using the magnolia tree as a focal point here. And then that area would be where the actual events would occur. Smaller events like parties and things like that would occur inside the house as far as like business meetings, those kind of things, Christmas parties. And then our parking would be off of Slate Top Road, not off of Barbara Mill Road. So we have a parking lot back here. A brand-new septic field. It's actually on a diagonal. That's why the parking lot's kind of L-shaped. And so all of that's planned to be wildflowers. Hopefully, they'll grow good. It's on top of the septic field, so it should. And then we'll have a path that connects this, the parking area to our facility. And then we have the driveway that actually will have a handicap space as well as a turnaround so nobody coming out onto Barbara Mill Road will be backing out. They'll all be pulling out in the traffic, which I've never backed on the Barbara Mill yet. So did have a fire truck come out the other day, and they backed out. It worked out fine. So that's the plan. The rest of this would be, would remain AR residential as it's currently zoned. And any questions?
I did have one. Is the property intended to be subdivided to keep the AR designation separate from?
Yes. Once we get the, so we've been under renovation since January of last year. We're running behind, and we're slated to be done in February. And as soon as we get done with that and get it, and get it finished up, then yes, we plan to subdivide or split off the residential from the zoning or vice versa, whichever way we want to look at it, split off the new zoning from the old zoning. Yes.
Any other questions?
No.
I think that's, and I guess Brass, I want to ask, so is that something that needs to be a condition? And I may, I may be out of whack here, so.
Absolutely. If that's, if that's condition, this body desires to have added to this conditional zoning, I would certainly ask you to go ahead and state that or put that into your motion. Just recall that the applicant has to agree, be in agreement with and agree to the terms and conditions.
Okay. So I mean, I guess I'll ask for guidance from Council. Is that something we ask at the second party? Can we ask that now?
You can ask that right now.
So, yeah, I would just ask, is that a condition that you could agree with to subdivide the property?
Yes. Our only, only response back would be is, once we're done, we're on a construction loan, so we got to refinance things like, so our only condition is yes. The plan is to split, but please be cognizant of, you know, stipulating it has to be with done in with a very short period of time. That's all we ask. Just please give us enough time to close out, get the construction done. The contractor has not been the greatest off the site, so we can finish up. And then we'll have to turn it into a commercial.
Commissioner Wood?
Mr. Law, I mean, I'm just curious as to why that would be an added condition. I mean, we, Ms. Lusha, we've rezoned portions of property all the time, don't we?
You have. I think part of the analysis would be looking at the adjoining tracks and making sure that there's some consistency with that piece. And so that's, that's probably what sparked this conversation. It's difficult when you split zone a piece of property to make sure that the enforcement is in, in site plan certifications and all that kind of stuff are accurate and complete because the property is split zoned and you don't know exactly where the lines are without having the surveyor out there and all of those sorts of things. And so that's, that's one benefit of having the property actually subdivided. And then it also provides some consistency for future land use in that particular area. So that is an additional benefit of splitting out the parcel. But certainly, it's whatever the pleasure of the board would be.
Is that your intent?
Well, I think that was the, kind of, my experience has been split zoning is not the preferred route to go. So if you can subdivide it, it just makes it better for those reasons that Council just mentioned.
So you're just cleaning it up for later?
Yes.
In addition, for the applicant or owners, so it actually makes that, any title search a little bit cleaner on the back end as well. So, and it does, it doesn't encumber, some situations, some, some of them is maybe that is encumbering the entire property where it's, it's really, we just put it on, this just cleans it up pretty exclusively, the same tax part.
Anything else for Mr. Linderman? Thank you.
Thank you.
Or is there any other person here that has any comments regarding this application? All right, I will close the public discussion and call for Mr. Newton to summarize and present the Planning Board's recommendations.
Yes, sir. As it relates to case 21-15, Planning Board does recommend approval. And once again, I will remind you that if you intend on adding the condition to subdivide property to separate this, this new zoning parcel, or create this new zoning parcel, that would need to be added to those conditions, and the applicant does need to verbally agree to those conditions as well.
And I guess with that, I would turn it over to the board for any discussion or any further questions.
I think it'd be smoother, Mr. Chairman, if we go ahead and add that condition. Certainly, we're not going to put a time limit on it, but a condition to, to, from this split zoning to, I think his request was AR for the back part of it. I would, I would like to add that as a condition if the applicant would agree to it.
Is it a condition if you don't put a time limit on it?
I mean, what is the appropriate time, time of the CO or when it's?
Well, we can, we can certainly hold, we can certainly withhold any certificate of occupancy for that or, so with the conditional zoning, there is an agreement that is signed, signed by the applicant and witnessed by notary that is then recorded. So we can, we can ensure that that's done before.
With the way things are going now, I mean, I know cash deals that are taking six months. I mean, how do you, how do you, how do you do this?
Yeah, he alluded to the fact that if his contractor continues to be slow, he wouldn't want to be bound by an unrealistic timeframe on our part when he can't control that. So if we tied it to the CO, it all works together.
So if he's, if he?
And I don't, I don't want to muddy the waters, but if there's a construction waiting on that property, I don't know if a CO is going to be required in order for that loan to close appropriately.
Well, we have to have a CO to finish that process up, but we'll need a CO to change it into a venue, change it. And I think that's the CO that we're referring to, is a CO that would come to venue. That'll, that'll fall into, from a residential to a commercial. I totally understand the fact, emergency light and those kind of things will have to be involved. That's the CO that we're referring to. Not the CO.
Well, I just hope for him to be through with construction in February, this to be rezoned and him not to be able to get it subdivided before August, and we've, we've lost him six months worth of revenue.
Because of surveyors or that type of thing, yeah.
Exactly right.
Or getting his loan transferred to the single parcel. If it's on the large parcel now, he may have to have changed to the smaller parcel entirely. That could take some time.
But it's not a condition if there's not a date?
Right. For the sake of the learning curve, if we propose a new condition and the applicant does not agree with it, it just falls into a black hole then? I mean, it just?
That's one of the factors that you would take into consideration under that public interest piece. So the applicant doesn't have to agree to any proposed conditions. It's a negotiated process. But for example, if it were some type of condition that were a make it or break it for you from the legislative perspective of, well, you know, it's not in the public interest because of all those reasons that we talked about before, then you could certainly choose to deny the project. So those are, that's one of the factors with this legislative process. You've got some broad discretion in the two things that you're looking at are consistency with the comprehensive plan and whether or not the project is in the public interest.
Mr. Linderman, do you, do you agree with this condition, what we're proposing about the subdividing the property?
Our whole plan is to subdivide it, split it off.
What, what kind of timeframe do you think you can have appropriate time to get this matter took care of?
My gut says by the end of the year, by the end of 2022. That'd be my gut. Anything less than that, we'll do our best. I mean, it improves us to be done, get it done in March. I just don't know if it can be done.
Would you agree to the condition that it be subdivided by 2022, the end of 2022?
I would agree with that.
That's your motion?
Yeah. Does anybody second?
Second.
Any other discussion? There's been a motion in a second. So do we, so do we add that here? So at this point, we can add the condition number 12 here? Okay, so there's been a motion in a second to add condition 12, which is to subdivide the property by the end of 2022. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Now Brass, and you said he has to agree to it in writing. Is, what, what does that flow?
So, so we do that on the back end.
Okay.
So as long as we have a verbal, as long as we have verbal consent this evening, then we do that on the back end through a written agreement.
And all that took place was appropriate?
Yes, sir.
And so if I understand my yellow, yellow highlighting here, it is, at this point, we ask the applicant to formally agree with the now 12 conditions as proposed.
Yes, we do. No issues with them.
All right. Thank you. I will now close this public hearing and look for a motion.
I thought we just passed one.
Oh, that was the?
I was just saying, that was a motion to add the condition.
Yes, but now that we have to add the full, yeah.
Yes, because you need to adopt a statement of consistency.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt a statement of consistency resolution as provided in the agenda package and approve the rezoning request with conditions discussed, adding, also by adding condition number 12.
Second.
For case number 21-15.
All right. There's been a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Grandlaw.
Merry Christmas.
Mr. Newton, if you would, present case 2120.
Yes, sir. Case 2120 is petition to rezone 55.48 acres of 67.4 acre tract located at 6,001 US Highway 70 Business in Clayton Township from General Business, Community and Community Business to Industrial 1, which is our lot industry classification. Owner is Hevner Properties. Advocate representing the owner is Paul Wembler. Utilities and services in the area provided by Wilson's Mills Fire District, Clayton Rescue. The existing land use, currently land is vacant, and it is currently split zoned, so this cleans up, cleans up the zoning. In addition, there are surrounding properties that are zoned AR, used for residential and agricultural purposes, and I-1 and used for a myriad of industrial business purposes. If you may recall, over, say, over the course of about a year and a half or so, there's been several properties in this area and even in this immediate vicinity that have, that this body has approved rezoning to Industrial 1. Traffic for this portion of US Highway 70 Business is 28,500 vehicles per day, and this does appear on our CPG as an existing, both are with adequate design capacity. However, this property does, does have some termination or some potential access from Wise Road as well. It appears that there's some questions whether the right of way actually extends all the way to the property, but, so that may be a potential. The property is located in a primary growth area in Fortis where the comprehensive land use plan and staff does recommend approval of the rezoning. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
If there's any, any confusion with Wise Road, what would be their address?
It would be on to US 70 Business, but they'd have to go through a permit process with DOT.
And, Mr. Chairman, forgive me if I forget, I think the property that is on Wise Road, we rezoned for a trucking warehouse?
There's been two, yes. There's been a trucking warehouse, and there's also one that was kind of an equipment, they'd say equipment or manufacturing or equipment assembly.
Okay.
Sales and assembly.
And on your, which, which one of these is?
I know, but what color is that one?
Is it, will, I will get it's on, this is not a, this is a lot.
Thank you. There's two tracks, there's two tracks in that vicinity, just to the, you want to say to the north and west of that property.
So Mr. Newton, will this rezoning make all the properties own the same? So we're going the opposite direction, and we got split zoning, and we're going to?
Yes, everything in the side of the US 70 would be.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Newton? All right, this time we'd like to hear from the applicant.
He should.
Yep. And if you would, state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Paul Wembler. I live in Smithfield, North Carolina, at 11 Kentwood Drive. I represent the Hevners in this particular rezoning. If you might recall, I was before you, within the last year, there were two adjacent tracks that were up there on the map that I presented for the rezoning. They hadn't been relabeled. We used GIS to produce the map, so they were labeled wrong, but you had previously rezoned them to I-1. And so I really stand here for any questions that you might have in regard to the rezoning.
Any questions?
I'd just be concerned about the Wise Road. Is that anticipated that, and I know these maps can be a little confusing, does Wise Road, do y'all plan on using Wise Road for in and out, or do you plan on going for the?
I can't address that right now. We're, we're just obtaining the rezoning, the property right, the vested right in the property. We're trying to obtain that right now. I have not worked with the Hevners on any plan specific to the property. I have not worked with the Hevners on any plan specific to the property yet.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Any, anyone else here to speak for this hearing?
I have a question for staff, Mr. Chairman. Braxton, we recently rezoned the property across the end of Wise Road, didn't we?
Yes, sir.
What, what was that rezoned to? Do you remember?
It was either I-1 or general business, I think it was I-1.
All right.
All right, at this time I'd close the public discussion portion, portion of the hearing and ask for Braxton to summarize and present the planning board's recommendations.
Yes, sir. As it relates to case 21-15, planning board does recommend approval unless Mr. your consideration statement of consistency.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Newton? If not, I'd close the public hearing and look for any discussion from the board. If not, I'll entertain, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt a statement of consistency resolution as presented in the agenda packet and approve the rezoning request for case 21-20.
I hear a second.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Any discussion?
This parcel includes some property across 70. Is, is that included in this rezoning?
That is not, it's not a dig.
Okay. All right.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Taylor might have, have to find a new place to walk. He's too busy down there on Wise Road.
All right, Braxton, we stay with you for a planning activity report.
Yes, sir. As promised, we'll give you a brief update on the land use plan where we're at last, last Monday evening, 29th of November. We had a steering committee met once again, and so we are officially in this, in this second phase or next phase of the plan. So we're from the, we're getting, going from the, kind of going from the what, now going to the how, if you want to put it in that manner. So it was a great discussion. I think we had a very productive meeting. Commissioner Braxwell was there, may disagree with me, but I think we had a productive meeting. So our next step from here is, as we go into the, from this what to the how, is we'll have in the month of January, we will have another steering committee meeting as a precursor to a, a public forum, another, our second public forum. That public forum, once again, will be held in January, probably in late January.
Mr. Chairman. Braxton, let me ask you, if you're moving from the what to the how, of course, I wasn't there, so I don't know the definition of what and the definition of how, so I'll just assume that to determine how you're going to do something, that predisposes that you have decided what you're going to do.
Well, in a sense, and I, maybe I'm prematurelying the what to the how, but we're, we're still working on the what to some extent, but this, the second phase, this second phase actually gets to, starts us in discussions of the how.
Okay, that's, that's all I'm saying is, and my fear throughout this whole process is that this process, you come in, and when I say you, I don't mean that personally, you, okay?
Oh, yes, sir.
And you say, this is not only what we're going to do, but this is how you're going to do it. And we've not had, as Board of Commissioners, any input or any discussion about what we're, what the direction of this plan is going to be. And I would think at some point in time, that we ought to have some input into the what before we start saying how we're going to implement something that we have had no input in.
Maybe I'm confused, Braxton and Commissioner Smith, you know, they're going to do the work and then we do our work after it's all done.
All I'm saying is, when you say we're going to do our work, you know, things build momentum. And when they come in and not only say, this is the plan, this is not only what we want to do, but this is how we want to do, and it's a finished product, then we've got to get our input, we've got to go back and tear the whole thing down, rather than there be some agreement, not only with the planning committee, but the commissioners. Oh, yes, we are all in agreement. This is what, what, where we want to go. This is what we want to do. And then we can talk about what vehicle we want to ride in to get there.
I, I didn't understand that to be, when we first started the process, we, you know, we, we appointed the, the committee and, and, you know, give them the opportunity to stakeholders to put forth their recommendation to us. But, but if we are involved in the process, and if we're dictating that, that means that we're dictating the process.
Well, that's our job. That's, that's what the, that's what the taxpayers and voters in this county have elected us to do the plan, to do the whole thing. The advisory group is just people to give us some advice. It is our job-
Well, I haven't-
To come up with a plan.
I haven't disagreed with you at all, and that, that's not-
Okay, well, all I'm saying is, I think at some point in time, when we're talking about what, what we're going to do, I think that ought to be in steps.
I can tell you from being on the board, being on the committee, there are a lot of assumptions made that, that this board is going to do things a certain way. And if we don't do them that way, it's going to put a kink in the plan.
To me, it's like talking about putting, making, baking a cake, and that group puts together the batter, but before they put it in the pans and bake it, we need to look at the batter and maybe sample it and see where we're going.
Let me, let me, I'm a little confused here from just the very beginning. You know, I think they've been charged with us getting consensus of the community of different representatives, different parts of the county. They've been charged with giving their opinion, giving their ideas. And I guess the how could be, how do they bring them to us to morph them in to our ideas? And I, so I don't, I don't, maybe the, the what and the how is not the complete process, maybe it's just they're part of the process. Is, 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 is that what you're saying, or are you-
I think, I think that's a fair summation of it. However, I will say what we can offer is we can certainly bring back what we have now.
Braxton, I, I, I don't, I just think it get ugly quick, okay? I don't want it to do that.
How could it get ugly quick?
Well, when they bring up, it's a complete project candidate, as Commissioner Braxwell said, that they've assumed we're going to agree with this, this, and this, and we don't agree with this, this, and this, then you got to tear it back down and start all over again. And I'm just saying, this is, this needs to be done in increments. It's, it needs to be incremental, that there needs to be, in my humble opinion, before we start talking about how we're going to implement the plan, or how we're going to implement what we're going to do, we ought to have some consensus on what we're going to do.
Yeah.
That, remember, this, it is our responsibility, it is, we get elected to do this. This is our responsibility. We can't delegate that responsibility to a committee. That committee is just to advise us in our carrying out our responsibility to develop a, a land use plan that's in the best interest of the county. That's our job. That's what we were elected to do. We get, we get advice from Chandra when we want to talk about water and sewer. We get advice from Rick when we want to talk about other things, but it ultimately is our responsibility.
No one's saying that it's not our responsibility. We'll be responsible for the final product that goes out there, even, even though based on everything that we see, and if we don't like, that's our job, that we can change it then.
I, I just, I, I, I really humbly believe we're, we're going to be, rather than having certain assumptions made and a project gets put in front of us, that we, we have not had some input as to where we're going to go, it's a, that's a bad process.
So if I understand correctly, though, you're, you're talking about another January steering committee meeting to discuss, I'm probably, I'm assuming it's not going to be the full-blown how-
Oh, no.
At the end of that one, excuse me.
No, no, no.
And then we got a public comment section, or another event, excuse me, where we're going to have public comment. So there is time for us, as you're concerned about, as getting in and making some comments, you know, whatever, getting our input in there before they just bring something to us and, and drop it off in our lap and, and expect it to be-
Because the what, the public forum is actually for the what. So it, it's, we're, we're looking to get back public input. I mean, would, if this, if this board decides, or would rather, we bring the what back when it's, when it's in a draft format, then we can certainly bring that back to you before the public forum. I would, I would suggest, just from the way the process is, the way we've structured it, is suggest getting the public input and then bringing that to this body.
I'm all for public input. I, I, great, we need public input. I'm all for public input, but I'm not for delegating my responsibility as a commissioner to come up with a plan that I believe is in the best interest of Johnson County. I think we need to get input. I just think before we move to how we're going to implement a plan and start drawing statutes and start drawing rules, we need to have a chance to discuss that.
So the next phase, what we're, what we're bringing back to you will be the draft of what, not how. But we're moving into, we're still beginning to move into that how phase, but we don't, we don't even have a draft of, of what is to transpire, what the county, what that full vision looks like for the county.
I think this is going to be like any other study that we do. We're relying on consultants, in this case, a committee, to bring us information. It is our job to make the, whatever the final product is, that is our responsibility because that's why we're elected. So I don't think this is circumventing any of that process. It's ultimately going to fall on us. I do understand what you're saying. We don't want to get to the very end and then have to break this thing all the way down, but if we get the, a summary of the what, we, we still have time to evaluate that and provide direction before we get to the very end.
Well, not, not to throw Commissioner Braxwell under the bus over there, but I think he, I think he brought up a very valid point, that there are certain assumptions being made, that we're going to do certain things, and I just, I, I just think we need to be very careful about where that goes.
All right, what was the charge to this committee, Braxton?
So the charge was to, one, bring back, act as a semi-advisory body. I want to use that term a little bit, a little bit liberally there, because essentially you have other advisory bodies that do something similar, and planning board being one of those, more adjustment being another. So essentially, they are charged to give feedback and help be advocates for this process, be ambassadors for this process, promote the process, and assist with the community or engagement piece of the process. And, and I think to this point, they've done an excellent job of that.
I think Fred's got a good point. It's fraught with risk, but it may be the only way to get from here to there. Let, let the committee do their work and bring it to us, and we may scrap the whole thing and start all over. If it's totally not something that we want, but we're still in control, and they'll, they'll just have to go through that process.
Yeah, we're not seeing a final product that's coming. We're seeing the next, the, the draft of the, that vision portion of the plan, which is your what, that draft is coming.
And we'll see that draft.
You'll see that before it ever, before, and it's not going to be in the full plan. It's just that portion of the plan, very much like the existing conditions.
If any commissioner has a problem with the draft, then they can so raise that concern in.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
To peel the onion, be honest and open, it's not going to be an issue of, does the advisory committee recommend X, and this board of commissioners recommend Y? That's not the way it's going to be. Advisory committee is going to recommend X, and then this board of commissioners is going to have a vigorous, rigorous discussion on X, Y, Z, and all, and other things. So this is, this process is, is not just the committee and the commissioners, this, it's, it, when it comes here, it's going to be a rigorous, healthy discussion-
On the spec, yeah, on the spec.
On where we need to go, and we need to have that discussion before people get too far down the track. That's all I'm trying to do. I'm not against the process. I'm not against the, the people. I'm just trying to be realistic about where we're going, and that we get there the best possible way.
I think Mr. Braxwell has a comment.
Yes, while we're talking about this, I, I think that as a commissioner, I no longer need to serve on that. I think that I need to be replaced. I'd like to be an observer and probably still attend the meetings as an observer, but not as a participant. I think I need to be-
I was going to ask Braxton that, because, you know, you were part of my appointment process, because I only had one candidate in my district, and Chad gave me you and, gosh, whatever, to appoint.
Mr. Gathers.
Yeah, no, he appointed, yeah.
Okay.
So process is that, are we going to replace Commissioner Braxwell now, or are we just going to leave it vacant?
I, I think you're under no legal obligation at this point.
Well, I, I disagree with that also. We, we decided going in that no commissioner would serve on that committee. We were all excluded from being on that committee. And, and I think he can do a great job on the committee, he just got, he just got to be a commissioner, and I think that takes him out of fulfilling that role, just as we were taken out of being on the committee.
Well, I think, I think the intent of that was that this process would be unbiased. It would be, just like any other consultant, it would be what the community wants versus what commissioners want, to give us an idea about the direction of, that the citizens want to go. I mean, I know we were all elected, but, I mean, just like the other, other day when the trash study, I mean, just because-
We got to-
The consultant says, we're going to charge everybody in the county for trash, that don't, that don't mean we, we need to throw our hands up and tear the results up and throw them in the trash. We just need to come to a consensus as a board of what we do with the information and where we go with it. I mean-
Larry, there's, you're a smart guy. There's no way this thing's not going to have bias. It has bias all over it. It has bias in that we're talking about an issue, that there's, there is differences of opinion in this county. Some people want this, some people want that, some people want that. They're all biased. We're all biased. Everybody's biased. That's what making law is all about, is taking different opinions and different biases, and that's why they call it making sausage. It's an ugly process, and then hopefully it's good at the end. That's what we're going to do. We're not, we're not going to get anything that doesn't have bias.
Well, the only thing I'll say, Commissioner Smith, I don't, I'm not completely disagreeing with you, but I think that was the point that we did when we said that we would have no commissioners on there, is give them the freedom and an opportunity to, to, to give us input now. We may not take that input, we may not use that input. We're going to, we're going to make decisions based on what we know about the law and how we can best serve the citizens.
Tony, you, I don't think you understood what I said. That committee has got people who have different opinions. They bring bias to the table. That doesn't have anything to do with us. They have bias. There's some people on that committee who want to have this type of development. There's some people on that committee that don't want any development. They have bias. That's, that's what bias is. And they've, they've got to deal with how they're going to come up with their recommendation, or how they're going to reconcile all the different biases. And then it'll come to us, and every commissioner here has a bias as to what they think it needs to be. I mean, and, and that's just, that's what government and making laws is, is to take different opinions and see if you can't find compromise. So we, we don't want to be like they are in Washington, but, so maybe we can do a better job than what they're doing up there, but that's, that's the process. And to, and to not know, not to admit that, you, you think you live in a wonderland. We don't live in wonderland.
So let me suggest this, I haven't heard any- I haven't heard anything to say that the next steps in the process are a problem. So I would suggest we move forward and direct Braxton and the consultant to figure out a way to bring the commissioners into the process, to provide some sort of guidance and, on it, before it gets to be completed, because I agree, there's going to be, there's biases here, but I think what this board tried to do is, we tried to get as, as good a blended committee as we could, to count on some of those biases to balance it out, but it is going to fall on us. But I would say, let's proceed on, at least with this next step. We still have time, we don't have to, you know, we're not looking to finish by a specific hard date at this point, but we can, we can figure out how best to get everybody's kind of input before we get to the very end.
I agree.
Yeah, so that is the plan, anyway. So once you get to, once we get to the draft of the vision, meaning the what, so your implementation is the how. I mean, that's kind of where we're going. But once we get the draft of the what, that was the, that's the intent, is bring it before this body and the planning board, because the planning board has to see it. Legally, they have an obligation as well. I mean, that's the process. That's exactly what we were intending, but we have to go through that public input. I mean, I just feel like it's better to get that public input prior to.
Then we can look at it and say, ain't no way in, heck, this is going to ever float, or this, 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 this is just never going to float.
Well, I think we've provided them, at least with some direction, to get us through the next meeting. If this is any indication of the heated discussions we're going to have, we're going to have some fun, fun meetings down the road come springtime, so.
I think there's still one question on the floor that Commissioner Braswell brought up, is with his becoming a commissioner and stepping off that committee, didn't you ask the question, or do we want to appoint someone else to fill your position, or just let it go from this point?
Yeah, that's. I would say let it go.
Too late in the game to do that.
You have a seat, right now with Mr. Braswell's participation, you have a 16-member committee.
That's plenty, yeah, plenty, okay. Good.
That's all I have for you.
Thank you for that.
You know, as, we talked about bias, and Commissioner Smith brought out a good point, and certainly geographically, because now Commissioner Braswell was on that board, is because he was from that area. And so I am somewhat concerned that if we don't find somebody reasonable, that's just my opinion, and my worry.
We do have somebody else from the Princeton area on there, and I can't think of his name off the top of my head, so.
Mark, Mark Wellens?
Yeah, yeah, so we've got somebody on there, so. All right, Mr. Hester, I believe you have a report for us.
Thank you, sir. I just have one thing. You know, the county, each, every year or two, looks closely at employee compensation, and, you know, how the markets change and those kind of things. Well, three or four years ago, we had a group, a Mercer Group, that come in and do a compensation plan for the county. I feel like we need to kind of request their help to update some of that, as well as some of these things can be done internally. So it's sort of a combination of their assistance. So we have a proposal for them for $5,500 to continue to update what we started three or four years ago. I just ask for the board approval on that recommendation.
I'll make a motion to approve that. I do want to make one clarification in that motion, though. I want to make sure that we do a thorough job of looking at all positions. If that includes that, that's great. If it doesn't, then I, let's readdress it.
Sure.
And that we also address the compression issues that we've talked about. And I'll probably say that five more times as we talk about it, because I just don't want to get to a point that we're going to overstep something and leave a stone unturned. If we're going to do this, let's do it correctly. And so I'll make a motion, we approve this request for $5,500 to Mercer Group.
I see. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
If I could add two to that, Mr. Harris, appreciate you saying that, and we would want to come and give updates to this board, as well as the Mercer Group, so just so that we're totally transparent with what happens moving forward.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any board reports or comments?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The presentation tonight about appointing a committee to look at the transportation issue, I've been, that's been on my mind a lot in the last couple of months, ever since we had, who was it, me and you, Tony, on the call with the?
Patrick.
The caucus, and Patrick, that's right. It's difficult to figure out who needs to be on that committee, because when, when Mr. Lee was talking about grants, I don't have time to look in and chase down these grants. I mean, that sounds like a staff position or something, but I think we probably ought to start looking at putting together some type of formal committee to look at this and work with the various interested party stakeholders in the county to see where we go. We may not come up with anything tangible in the near future, but at least we ought to be working towards it. And I'm not talking about mass transit or anything like that, I'm talking about local transportation.
I agree with Commissioner Godwin. I've had some conversations with Ms. Leggett that spoke on this topic as well, and she actually has a lot of knowledge and has spent time in Washington and knows a lot of these. So I think a committee would be a great approach to that, that could assist us with positioning ourselves to address this very needed part of the county's infrastructure.
Is that something we want to discuss at our January meeting, or maybe ask staff to give us some thoughts and ideas how that may look? Because we all collectively, at different times and individually, have talked about that, you know, the, kind of the last mile, how do we get people, not, not even to Raleigh, but locally, you know, how do we get people, you know, that want to work at Amazon, or Gripples, or Novo, or wherever, how do we get them there, so?
Mr. Chairman, you know, there's been some discussion about us having a retreat, or some meeting to come up with where we want to go, and things like what Ted brought up could be part of that process, is part of a global process rather than piecemeal process. And I, I'm not making a motion or anything, I'm just saying, I just think we need to think about that, as to, with, you're the new chairman, we've got a new vice chairman, clearly y'all are going to bring a new day to this committee, and we just need to determine how, what are the nuts and bolts going to be? How are we going to govern? Who's going to do what? What are we going to do? I think it's got to be some discussion. It's not going to happen out of thin air.
I would agree with that. I think that, Mr. Hester and I have had one or two or 20 conversations about that, and my vision as the chairperson would be that we would indeed have a, and two days is stuck in my head, was it a day and a half or what, but two days where we can get together as a board, discuss many of the issues we have, and come away with a vision for what this board wants, and set priorities for staff, so that they know going into the next year, this is what we expect to accomplish. So I would say to encourage all the board members to think about that as we look forward into the, you know, the springtime, is being able to take two days and focus on the needs and priorities of Johnston County, and provide not only a vision for us and the staff, but for, for this county of where we, where we want to go, so.
I agree.
All right, anything else?
Chairman, I move with yours.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go home.